Good morning and welcome to the Greenfield Public Schools Special School Committee Meeting for Friday, October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, this meeting is being recorded by the committee. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Not hearing any. Uh, Secretary Denis, will you call the role?
Chair Johnson Mossad.
Present.
Vice Chair Sexton.
Here.
Member Childs.
Here.
Member Goodwin. Elizabeth Denis, I'm here. Mayor. Member Martini. Okay, you have a quorum minus the mayor and member Martini.
Excellent. So we're um starting at eight oh four A M. Is there any public comment this morning? Okay, great. Um, let's move on to superintendent search committee composition. Secretary, I mean Vice Chair Sexton.
Um, are we able to share a screen? Or do folks have access to the board that will share with them yesterday? Hello, my phone.
Uh, I can probably work that. Well, let me see. Why don't I do that?
Essentially, what I, what it is that I'm asking to be shared is a PowerPoint part two. That is a revisitation of decisions that we need to make, which is the screening committee of salary. So it just has my proposal here for what the meeting uh or the composition looks like. Um, and then my rationale for how they uh get like chosen in the process there. So I'll just state it out loud while, while you're continuing to do that. Then my proposal is to have um the three school committee members, myself, Amanda and the mayor, uh which are already part of the steering committee, to have three school staff, preferably an admin, a teaching staff and a support staff. Three parents that we will do our best to be representative across grades and student demographics. Um, and two broad community members that do not have legal parents, just be interested citizens, potentially representatives, business people will be potentially representative of our uh senior population, um who all of us have a vested interest in where our schools go and who the leadership is. So that's, that's my proposal. That brings us to um, that's an eleven person committee. So luckily there, we don't get tied. And it seems broadly representative without becoming publicly. So that's, that is my most, I'd love to hear what folks' reactions to that.
Let's do a motion first and then we'll discuss reactions. So a motion to approve the composition as uh presented by.
So moved to approve and seconded.
Okay, so we have a motion from member Goodwin and a second from member Childs. Is there discussion?
I have two thoughts. Um, one of them is, you know, eleven as well within that nine to twelve range. Do we want to have, allow ourselves the flexibility of twelve if we're having trouble with the makeup? And then the other thought I have is uh, what about people who are double dippers? Like, I mean, everyone would be assumed to be a member of the community, but parents can easily also be teachers. And, and then also, you know, your special populations, like, okay, three parents representative across student demographics. I really wanna make sure that we have a special needs population parent in there. Like, I, I think it would be horrible if we didn't have one of them as speaking up for our more vulnerable populations.
About number twelve being um special, just like your star stakeholder.
Well, I don't know that we need to have that special. I think it just might be a good idea to have some sort of flexibility. Because what if you pick someone and Amanda being unavailable and that's a third of the representation.
An alternate on right there.
So here's the, here's the deal about this, this screening committee. When we put up the call for people to put in their, like, their letters of interest, um, it's gonna include all of the time committed and the dates that they must be available. And I hate to, community, I hate saying, these are, and Elizabeth has a question. Um, these are fixed dates. These are not dates that are really, really, you must, like, if you're going to send your letter of interest, you must be available during the dates in mid-November, um, where we will actually be going through with applicant deals. That's just gonna be one of these deals. And that has to be one to become one. Because we wouldn't want someone to come in the first two candidates, the second two candidates is not there, and uneven procession of the field. Um, I would be open to a twelfth member if we really uh feel strongly not having that. I do think that this is also um, gonna outreach we can be doing. Like, as a, for instance, one of the immediate uh places we need to send this, this invitation to participate is to our C P. Anyone's parent who has that experience, that means those are the parents that we would like to invite, or to spread amongst their network. Um, in order to like, really get it, get it out there. So I think it's part of personal, like, making sure that we're clear who, like, that we have this priority. We want to make sure that if we have twenty five percent of our students, one, four, our students' ages may be more than that, then we want that experience, that perspective and those needs represented in this process. So I'm, I'm open to a twelfth member, people can gather where I should be there.
Uh, what do you have, Elizabeth? And then, Elizabeth?
Um, let me lower my volume. I am just really cognizant that this is the third time for me doing a um hiring a superintendent. And I think that it's so wonderful that we're finally doing this process of community engagement with it. I think that's been sorely lacking. So I'm so, I'm so proud of us. Like, I really wanna commend you, Stacy, for making this so accessible and succinct. And I think it's really special that we're doing this. But I also worry that um, I think we should keep records of how those meetings go and who attends. Because what I'm worried about is that people are going to commit to go, but then they're not gonna go. And I'm worried that if we don't have as many people as are willing, when, you know, the rubber meets the road, you're only gonna have half the people show up. I'm just worried about attendance um to these meetings and therefore not getting all of the perspectives that we need. So I just wanna make sure that we keep really good records of who attends, um, how often people show up. Um, because if we have to do this in the future, may we never have to do this in the future. We'll know what that process was like, because it's not always, you know, community engagement. Um, you know, that, that goes well. I hope that makes sense. It's very early in the morning.
I think, I mean, one of the things is keeping track of who they are and maybe what special group they represent. So like any L L parent, a special ed parent, um, community member who also maybe has grandchildren in the schools, um, just to see how many different people you're, you're reaching out to. Um, and I think the other piece of this is people who we normally would reach out to, who don't really get online. Um, there are people through newsletters, um, through teachers, through schools, getting the word out.
Um, absolutely. Which speaks to the second part of the whole deal, which is our outreach and recruitment strategy for this. So something Mel said reminded me of something back from my days at Federal Street School, how I think at one point they stopped calling things parent and outreach, and instead it would be guardian or family to speak to the kids who were being raised by grandparents or other people. So we might wanna change parents to family slash guardian, just so that they know that, you know, they're a grandparent, but they are the one who does the school stuff. So this is their role in this committee.
Superintendent? Um, just regarding that, um, in other places that I've worked, we've changed the term to caregivers.
Perfect.
It seemed to be, it seemed to be at that time, a good catch-all, because not everybody has parents, as you mentioned.
Right. Not all caregivers are form of guardians and so on.
Right.
Any others discussion? Okay, call the vote. Secretary Denis, will you?
Chair Johnson Mossad.
Um, I'm, I'm been reading my Robert's Rules of Water, so I'm gonna try to stay out of discussions and stay out of voting as much as I can. So if maybe in the future you can ask, does the chair wish to vote? That's what they do at city council meetings. But I'll say, at, at the end, ask me if I wish to vote.
Okay, do you want, okay, we'll, we'll start that now. Okay. Secretary Denis, I'm a yes. Uh, Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
Uh, member Childs?
Yes.
Member Goodwin?
Yes.
And does the chair wish to vote?
No. Okay. And we'll move on to um discussion of salary range for superintendent. Vice Chair Sexton?
Great. Um, so we're revisiting this after uh being, being informed that the salary proposal that I originally put forward is laughably low, which after doing my homework, I agree. So my original proposal from the last week, was it just last week? Was a hundred and fifty-five to a hundred and seventy-five K. Um, after doing a bit of homework, which we've got this part that the board has provided, and I also put some additional um information in these slides as well. Um, my new proposal is having a range of a hundred and eighty to two hundred K, which I know sounds like a lot. It is a lot. I think for many of the folks who live in this community, that sounds like an incredible salary, if it is. I'm happy to be thinking that. Um, and when you look at the field around, when you think about the kinds of credentials and the kinds of experience that it takes to do this job, and to do it well, when you think about the kinds of experience we want someone to come into this role with, um, we need to be able to pay the premium that, that it takes to get the staff that we want. Um, and so uh, I really appreciate you providing this. If you wanted to take a moment to explain, I'll slide up. Just information, these are this current year's salaries for a number of districts that are in our drug comparisons as well. It's just a little bit slitty for the meeting.
Yep.
Yes, I'm glad we are recording this meeting. Um, I'm happy to see that our members chat. That's fine, because I went uh town by town and wrote their budget.
Very nice. What I presented for you after talking with Vice Chair Sexton yesterday afternoon about having a laugh and some stuff, so I did some homework quickly yesterday afternoon and last night. These are some numbers that are uh available to me as a superintendent through various sites and things like that. I've given you and some information that probably wouldn't be readily available, as well as how long people have served and what their degrees are. Generally, I'm not looking to share this a whole lot in that sense, but the dollar figures are for real. So the superintendent, you see in F Y twenty-five, those are actual salaries of last school year. That's F Y twenty-five. Um, this year's results, unless you do personal digging, uh, were compiled in a place where I was able to grab this current years. They're being compiled right now by um an organization. I did add, and it does, it's a little typo, there should be F Y twenty-six and twenty-seven. I, all I did for those two columns was add three percent on top of it each year. And that's an assumption, right? That certain people are getting three percent, but some will be two and a half, some will get three and a half, who knows, in that range, just to show you where they would be. I also just bring to your attention too that on the twenty-seven, which is next year, because that's the job you're filling that last column for next year. In that sense, you'll have some openings. Obviously, you know, we'll be open here at Greenfield. You know, Montague was searching for a superintendent right now. And then if you go a little farther down, North Hampton also is on that list. Uh, East Long Meadow Superintendent announced his retirement. After fifteen years, he'll be retired. Um, I gave grouping wise, more geographical, because a lot of the superintendent salary truly will, will lie geographical. I didn't reach out, and I said, reach to the darts in Eastern and Central Mass, because life changes out there. The salaries rise in, in that sense, and, and right yourself, cost of living is expensive, that type of scenario. So to compare apples to apples, I did keep it a little more geographical. So you see your Franklin County um comparables comps in the top, then I went a little to the east, right, um, and a little on the other side of Quaman, and then more in the Hampshire County area and a little in Hampton County down below. Um, a lot of it will come when you're discussing and looking, I think it would be really a number of students too. Number of students become an, an issue, a factor. And it, and also the community itself, but you are the county seat here in Franklin County. So you are a big guy, a big girl, in that sense, right? A big person in, in that sense. And with that come different issues that you deal with, whether it's uh special education population, low income population, high needs population, E L population. You're generally gonna have more of that than you're surrounding. And I say gen, different things will change with that. So um, this is just as a, an F Y I, as after we were talking yesterday, figured I'd help you, try to help you, you know?
And um, we have a few of the same uh districts that we, that we chat, that are, that are represented here, but we have a couple of ones that are different. Like I've got Clinton, Clinton in here, which you know, et cetera, those are more of our dark districts that Desi has, and they're comparable enough in terms of size and property, et cetera. And really, the range that I'm, that I'm newly proposing, one eighty to two hundred, fits really within all of this limitation. Um, and I think that with that range, we are likely to attract someone we want.
So you want a motion?
I'd love to.
And can you give me the range?
Um, I know that the Greenfield Public Schools accept the salary, superintendent salary range of one hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand dollars per year uh effective.
So move second. Okay, any discussion? Uh, secretary?
I guess I just want to, like, realize and put on the table that even though I, I'm totally uh into the salary range, I think it's great. But part of that, there's the base salary, and then there are a lot of additional things that we're gonna bake into the contract that are not part of the base salary. And that could be like fifteen thousand dollars a year for travel. It could be like ten thousand dollars a year for, you know, professional development. There are larger numbers that we're, may not have in our heads yet, or we might just now be thinking of, that are gonna go into this. So I think maybe should we state that we're thinking, wave your hands, make the lights turn on. Hi! Are we thinking that this base salary is, is before we add these things on? Or are we thinking that we're including all of these additional things into it? So we're thinking all encompassing.
It's just the base salary. This does not include benefits.
Okay, this is not including benefits.
The needs, the bases that I gave you not including benefits.
Yes, both, both the part that this role provided and the one that's in the hardware. Older, they're all just the base.
Okay, all right. I think that's an important thing to know, because whatever our base is gonna be, we're, get ready to add like twenty thousand dollars.
Yes.
So just to have that in our minds as we're working through this. All right, thank you so much. I wasn't clear on that.
Are there any discussion? Secretary Denis, will you call the vote?
Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Chair, would you like to vote?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Um, I think those are the only time sensitive things you needed from us, uh, Vice Chair Sexton, about the search work. Okay.
Should be great, please.
Okay. Um. I also added, because we got an email that came in and is time sensitive, um, discuss an impossible discussion, impossible action response to state chapter seven, local contribution study, public comments session at Greenfield High School, November sixth. So Senator Commerford emailed us, and basically, um, the chapter um seventy formula has two sides. Um, well, it, it's actually, this is, is not just about, this is not actually about chapter seven. The chapter seventy is the, the funding the state provides the schools, and then there's also a funding formula for the amount that municipalities contribute. And that aspect of it hasn't been studied, I guess, for eight years. And eighteen years? Okay, yes, eighteen years. Um. And so they, basically, they want to do a study on it, and they would like um not to be doing that in a vacuum. They want to hear from um, from folks, um, their thoughts about that. Um, so um, there's, there are a lot of different public comment sessions, um, starting on, on Thursday in Boxford. Um, but one of them will be November sixth, right here at the Greenfield High School. Um, and then there will also be a virtual public hearing on, on Tuesday, November eighteenth. Um, so I guess I was wondering if we, as a school committee, um, had thoughts that we wanted to put forward collectively? And or if there's someone we wanted to designate to go um and represent the school committee at the hearing on November sixth. Um, and so I guess um, might be useful to start with just a discussion. Do people have thoughts about the formula, formula about the municipal funding? Okay. So people, people do. Um, so maybe one place to start would be just to give, um, if we can um, uh, just give members a chance to, to share their thoughts. And we'll let, you, you know, one person speak at, at a time, and no one speaking twice until everyone who wishes to has had a chance to speak once. Um, so people who wanna share their thoughts?
Yes, that's me with the soapbox.
Okay.
Um, so yes, this is an old formula. It has not at all been touched in well over a decade. It's one that, because it just calculates, okay, how much can the town afford to pay? That has not kept up with the reality of life, and even when it was first put into place, it was inadequate. So we're talking about something that was out of date at the moment it was implemented, and there have been all sorts of contributing factors since then. Like, I'm sure that the people who originally put this formula together had good intentions and didn't think health insurance was going to drive towns into the ground, or the transportation issues coming up now. Um, you, you can't just constantly live your life making the decision based on bad data because of the formula that was flawed. You have to be able to adjust these. And the first step to that is to study and see, okay, here's how these rural districts are being hurt. Here's how other districts might be treated better than others demographically. Um, like certain wealthy districts, they're, what they're able to pay versus what they end up having to pay, radically different. And so you'll have certain districts with higher needs populations that will be paying well over what the state says they have to pay, while still being unable to have the basic paras to fulfill their I E T needs, just because what they need versus what the state says, radically different. So I am strongly in favor of this study. Uh, it's one of the early steps to meaningful school funding reform at the state level, which districts like Greenfield and a lot of our neighbors desperately need.
Okay, number Goodwin? We also are, are not even the same um organizations we used to be. We are providing services that we have never provided before as schools. And as someone who's been an educator, an administrator, and also worked um in the Berkshires, law school districts just survived on grant writing, federal money and state grants, and they are dwindling to the point of non-existence. So even with aggressive grant writers.
Sorry.
Some folks can pause while they travel.
Shake that mic.
Yeah, just, just touch it. It's, they can still see us.
Oh, you're tough. Okay, hey, we're, we're freaking out. Yeah, this happened before, yeah. Okay, we lost you for a second, but you didn't lose us, apparently. Okay.
So, um, a lot of districts that have lost, um, they used to be kindergarten grants. There used to be Title I, and it was a major grant. Now it's kind of like barely there. And um, there were state grants that funded teachers' jobs. We had, we were, Massachusetts was a place where you could get money to help the schools. And today is an aggressive act um to, to engage in. Uh, you spend a lot of time in Worcester shaking hands and trying to beg for money. And so I would say that Massachusetts, there is a, an implication in that formula that Massachusetts was wealthy and had a lot of money. And there are a lot of places in Massachusetts where that is not true. People are, are making decisions about medications versus food. And I think it's really disturbing that the formula hasn't been looked at um in so long. Uh, we are not the same people. Um, and Massachusetts has been struggling for a long time, and it's, I'm really um, I had planned to be there just as a, a citizen and as an educator, um, wanting to speak on behalf of what has happened to education in Massachusetts.
Any other, Vice Chair?
Um, I just really wanna highlight this as an opportunity for us to really work with our city counterparts, because this is the portion of the budget, like the portion of our findings where we come together. It's just the local contribution portion. Um, and it's the part where we are rock and hard place year after year because of the inadequacy of the local itself. And so I'm really hoping that not only can we be present, but I'd love to see some folks from the city council, or some of our other municipal boards and committees, um, president in reviewing our case, because it's, 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 the venue happens to be schools, but the, but the issues that we're talking about are community. What?
Secretary?
We cannot hear you.
You're on mute still.
Sorry, sorry. Um, I think that this is a real testament to the work that we've done as a committee. We went to Beacon Hill now three times, and we spoke specifically about chapter seventy funding formula. And we asked that they start to have these public input sessions and revisit the formula. And I feel like, you know, go us, because we went and we said it with all the other school committees, and we made a big stink about it. And maybe this is one of the reasons why they're willing to have the conversation. I can't attend on Thursday because I teach a class that night, but I will be at the virtual forum. Um, but I think that the main thing that people, people talk a lot about, about, you know, it being about local contribution. But the problem is that the flaw of chapter seventy is that it caps everything at a four point five percent inflation. So if inflation is higher, we then have a budget shortfall. We're not getting the money that we need to fill that gap. So if we wanna continue to pay the teachers and continue to increase their salaries during um contract negotiations, we're having to do that straight from our pockets, from, just straight from local people. We're not getting the money that we need from the state to fill, fill that gap. So I think it's sort of important for people to understand that it's, it's an actual flaw in the math. And it's been that way for a long time, and we're all struggling to fill the gap however we can. And that puts a real strain on, you know, our working families and our communities. So um, you know, I think that I think that we shouldn't rest on any laurels, and in May, we gotta go right back to the State House and keep pushing, because I don't think that they want to do this. Their subcommittee hasn't met in years and years to evaluate this, and that's one of the things that we told them when we were there, that you haven't met, you haven't reevaluated, you have to get in a room together and have this conversation, because it affects all of us. And Greenfield has not received its proper amount of state funding in years. So if anyone out there listening can go and lend your voice, do so. This is your big moment of advocacy. And the virtual forum, I'm still glad they're also doing that, so that we can chime in at other times.
Great. Um, well, maybe if we're ready to some, what, you wanna say something?
Just one last thing on that. Uh, I think we should give a shout out to certain people who've also been big in pulling together this information and working with Senator Commerford, people like Doug Selwyn, and especially Jesus Leva, who's no longer a Greenfield resident, but still advocating on behalf of Greenfield and still working with Senator. So this is already something that community members have been very good with their advocates, advocacy. So I'm just seconding what uh, member Denis just said about how the community really can make a difference here.
Okay, um, so I think um, in terms In terms of, I think there's two, two aspects, what does the committee wanna say, and who do we wanna designate to say it, where and when? So let me take a stab at, um, uh, very basic resolution of, of the committee. Um, so, I'd like to hear a motion that the school committee has resolved, that this, this formula. Um. Need is long overdue for study, um, because of the way, yeah, uh. Communities like greed feel they're unfairly burdened with the cost of education, so. Seconding, all right, is there any other discussion on that?
I'm just, I'm happy with this resolution as it is, if we designate someone to actually go say something about some. Facts and figures, it's part of our statement.
Yes, okay, great, okay. Um, so what, we'll, we'll maybe vote on this resolution and then figure out how to. Designate someone and figure out their talking points before they represent, okay, um. Any other discussion on the, the resolution? Okay, Secretary Denise, will you call the vote?
I'm a yes, Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Chair, would you like to vote and how?
No, thank you, and, um. Okay, so, uh. I guess there's, I think it would be good at both the Greenfield hearing and the virtual hearing to have someone from the committee. Designated to speak on behalf of the committee, um, so maybe we can figure out who and then work out. How the, their talking points are gonna come together, um, so. Who is interested and available in, um, representing at the in-person, um. Uh, public hearing at the high school? Where is mine, and Vice Chair Sexton, okay, so.
Yeah, I, I, I need to check the conflict, like, I think I am, but.
Okay, oh, and, uh, you have your hand up, secretary, but I think you said you couldn't make that one. Oh, you're on mute.
I, I can't make that one, but I would love to, um, see Anne. Speak if possible, because she was with us and participated in the meetings that we had to prepare for. Our advocacy work, um, and went, so she has some direct experience with, with that.
All right, would you like to make a motion that Anne represent us at the in-person, um, public comment session?
Yes, I would, I make a motion that Anne represent us at the public comment session on November sixth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, if we vote for you, would you accept?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll get rid of the conflict, it's less important.
Oh, I'm sorry, you had a conflict.
Well, I might, but it's the kind of thing where it's, I'm not essential for the other thing.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear that, otherwise I wouldn't have jumped in.
Well, it's cause I was in the process of looking on my hand, to making sure that I was, so I, I have confirmed, I'm not essential for that.
Okay, great, um, any other discussion on the motion to have member Childs represent us? Okay, um, Secretary Denise, will you call the vote?
Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Abstain?
Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Chair, would you like to vote?
No, thank you. Uh, so. Yes, so I think that's sufficient, right? Um, great, um. Uh, great, so congratulations, thank you, um, all right, but then let's move on to, um. Uh, who will represent us at the, uh, virtual Zoom, uh, session? Is there a motion?
I move to appoint member Denise to represent us at the Zoom session.
Okay, is there a second? Second, second from Vice Chair Sexton, discussion?
Elizabeth has been the one who's been organizing going to Beacon Hill. Uh, she has been the one directly engaging and scheduling meetings, she's very knowledgeable on it, and she's already. Started building these relationships.
Okay, great, any other discussion, secretary?
Can you, uh, does anybody have the event in front of them, the virtual one, can you just remind me the time? I wanna make sure that I'm writing all of this down with my notes.
Yeah. Um, it is four P M to seven P M on Tuesday, November eighteen. And there's a online registration link, and the email about all this is, um, at the top of. Um, your, uh. Email inbox, cause I, uh, superintendent was kind enough to, to send that along.
Thanks, I just also wanted to make sure the people listening at home know. The exact time, and I've written it down, so yes, I'm happy to do that if you would like me to.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm taking a detour, cause I'm seeing, uh, Madison's message in the chat. With a question about the vote that we take on the makeup of the search, and I just wanna answer that now before I forget. Uh, the vote, the vote was on the eleven member committee, we, we did not amend the, uh, the original motion to add a twelfth member, so. It's, uh, still the eleven, eleven member, uh, body. Yep, okay, so back to, um. We're on the motion to appoint Elizabeth to represent at the virtual session on Tuesday, November eighteen. Uh, do we have any other discussion? Secretary Denise, will you call the vote?
Uh, sure, I'm a yes, Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Chair, would you like to vote and how?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Great, so the motion carries, so now we, we have, uh, have our main message, and we have our two delegates, I guess. Um, I would pro- I would propose that, um. I guess I'd like to hear a, a motion that we create a one-time ad hoc working group to develop talking points. Relative to our resolution that would be composed of myself. Uh, Secretary Denise and member Childs, uh, to meet before, um, November sixth.
So moved.
Wait, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, we'll say you're the second secretary, although Goodwin tried, so thank you for that, um, discussion? Okay, all right, then what's the?
Uh, Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
Member Goodwin?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Chair, how would you like to vote?
I, I would prefer not to vote, thank you.
Okay. It passes.
The motion carries, great, so maybe, um, the three of us can stay, um, uh. After the meeting and work out when, when that meeting will take place to develop those topics. Okay, um, then, I think we are on to adjournment, if I'm not mistaken. So, uh, a question to attend from Vice Chair Sexton, and a second to member Goodwin, did you get that, secretary? Okay, uh, any discussion, Secretary Denise, will you call the vote?
I'm a yes, Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned and it's unanimous.
All right. So, the recording, thank you for this.
Thank you.